Good evening, it is Monday, January 13th, 2020. At 6:00 PM, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council's Committee of the Whole to order and ask that the Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Betts?
Here. Thank you, all who are present. We have minutes to approve from January 6th, 2020. Vice President Hussein?
President Spatafor, I'd move the meeting minutes from January 16th, 2000, I'm sorry, January 6th, 2020 is written.
There's been a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Up next, we have public comment on agenda items. We have, we will be given up to three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium if you wish to address the Committee of the Whole. And sir, if you could please state your name for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Brown. I'm pastor of Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church here in Lansing and been a part of the Lansing community for about 10 years as a Community Affairs Coordinator for a local TV affiliate. But I just wanted to speak on behalf of Dr. Jackson Johnson. Most of you probably haven't seen her resume, but it's not necessary to see it to know, to understand who she is. If you just take a look at what her work is, she basically helps people. Most people can't wait, like myself, to five o'clock to get off work and get home and to get away from what it is I do Monday through Friday, nine to five, but Joan is different. It's who she is. She gives herself for somebody else every day. When mayors have changed, she kept city services moving in our city. It's who she is. When people have no food, she feeds them. They have no clothing, she puts clothes on their backs. Mothers without diapers and babies without food. She helps people. She attracts valuable resources to our community and she, over the last decade, has built the infrastructure that provides services to a multitude of people. As Community Affairs Coordinator, I work with Joan almost every day. As a navigation and outreach consultant for the state utility program, I work with Joan every day. As a pastor at Advent House in Shiloh, I see her on the weekends giving her time, feeding people because she cares. She's a gift from God and she's full of passion. She gives because it's her. She's not here for income, she's here always for the outcome. There's a certain amount of respect that you earn, it's not loaned, it's not borrowed, it's earned. And that's what separates the Lansing community from many other communities, is that even though we disagree, we still are respectful in all of our affairs with each other. It appears that we're here now because she's providing services, services that our community needs, they become dependent on. And if it wasn't for her and her vision, her passion, her tenacity, those services wouldn't be here and those people wouldn't receive that help. How she was treated, I believe, was a little humiliating. I'm sure that if we did a second audit, it would probably reveal that some others have done more and things that are worse, but probably treated better. For her service alone, she deserves respect. Once you put a nail in a piece of wood, you can take the nail out, but it still leaves a hole in it. There's a hole right now in this process, there's a hole in the values of respect and appreciation that we claim, there's a hole in the true lens of love that allows us to see the difference between what's illegal and what's impractical. Sometimes the way you do things speaks louder than the words that you say. This wasn't handled properly, she's one of the greatest heroes in this community. Young people look up to her, families depend on her, the elderly and disabled need her. There are a lot of offenses that have happened across history.
Sir, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there others that wish to address the council, the committee? Thank you, sir.
My name is Melvin Jones. I'm the pastor of Union Missionary Baptist Church here in the city. I'm also the president of the Clergy Forum and also the president of Action in Greater Lansing. And I come representing their voices in support of Dr. Johnson. I just wanted to share the fact that I've worked with her over a number of years, I would imagine some 30 years. As a matter of fact, she served under me as president of the Human Relations Department for a while and I've just noted the level of her service throughout the years in this community and was deeply saddened at the fact that the kind of publicity and unanswered questions made public tended to demean her character. I think she is certainly a person of integrity, she has shown that to me over the years. And I would hope that in this dire situation, that she would garner not only the support of our community, but your support as well.
Thank you, sir. Are there others that wish to address the Committee of the Whole? Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Sharon Dade. I'm the director of New Hope, I mean, sorry, New Hope Community Center, which is part of Holy Cross Services in the center of downtown Lansing, 430 North Larch. And I have worked there for probably 20 years, serving the homeless. And I've worked in this city for over 30 years. And I've worked hand in hand with Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson. And I do not believe that this city has a stronger advocate for the people that are in poverty in this city, the people who are struggling in this city, than Dr. Joan Jackson It really breaks my heart to see what feels like a lack of respect for the work that she's done, working with her side by side. I don't believe she's ever done an illegal thing. She's certainly been pretty open and honest in every meeting I've been in about what she does, how she does it. I'm not portraying her as an angel, but she is certainly a person that gets things done. And she gets things done primarily with her voice. She is an advocate in every area, in mental health, in law enforcement, when we have cold weather, we had cold weather this weekend, and I got a call from several people here at the city because her presence was absolutely noticed, her absence of her presence was absolutely noticed. Unless we take care of the least of the people in our city, I don't think it's appropriate for us to just think about the people that have. And when we have events like we had this weekend, the people that are at risk are the people that live on the street, the people who do not have transportation for their children. And those are the people that Joan spoke up for every single time I've ever seen her in a meeting. Those are the people she lived her life to support. And I just think that we should really consider, before we tear down someone's reputation, their integrity and their life's work, what that means. I truly do not believe she's ever done anything illegal. And so, I just think how we treat people says a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Dudley and I am a retired teacher. I was in the Lansing School District for 40 years. I also do volunteer work at the Advent House and I've known Dr. J for, gosh, over 30 years through Advent House. I've seen Dr. Johnson on Christmas morning before she would even eat her own breakfast, go to the Advent House and give toys out to kids and feed the homeless. She has such a heart for the disenfranchised people of this community. A community is only as strong as we support, a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. So if we're not supporting the people that are disenfranchised, that at their bottom of the socioeconomic scale, our whole community is affected and impacted by that. And Dr. Johnson sees that and has dedicated her life. She's trained her children before they open a Christmas present. They're down at Advent House. Nikki and her other kids, they all volunteer. But I think what's being done to her is horrible. And I think there is going to be, a price is always paid when we touch God's people that are doing God's work. I don't know what that is, I pray for this city, I pray that we come together, but to say that Dr. Johnson has ever done anything wrong other than give her service for other people is just an atrocity. I think she was treated with disrespect. I just don't like any of the whole process, the way she was hunted down and accused of things. So I'm standing here to say that I've seen nothing but good that Dr. Johnson has done and I hope that in the end, her reputation and all is untarnished.
Thank you. Are there others that wish to address the committee?
Good evening, my name is Susan Kankrow and I live here in Lansing. I'm also the Executive Director at Advent House Ministries and the Chair of the Capital Region Housing Collaborative, which was the Greater Lansing Homeless Resolution Network. I've lived and worked in this city for almost 40 years. I've been the Director of Advent House for 26 years. And I just want to say that in a position like that, there are a lot of people who come up to you, they smile, shake your hand, they say something nice, and they do absolutely nothing. Joan Jackson Johnson was on the board with my organization when I was hired and she's been involved as a volunteer, not on our board, since she's worked at the city. And you know Joan and Joan will come up to you and she'll be absolutely honest with you, whether it's good or bad. And in 26 years, she's been one of the best measures of whether I was doing my job. And she asked me to be honest. And I will tell you, there's nothing hidden at all. Joan is upfront and she speaks her mind, but she also tells you what she's doing. When it got down to anything important, she could also listen. I believe that the work she has done in this city, and I hope you're all listening, that the work she's done in this city has made a critical difference in whether we have violence, homelessness to the extent it could be in other cities, abuse of children, abuse of the elderly, hunger and want. She's not solved every problem, but she's helped tremendously. We need to support that. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that wish to address the committee? Ma'am, please come to the podium, state your name.
My name is Tekeah Quinney Davis. I'm just going to read a couple of things and I have known or I have volunteered with Joan for the past 13 years. My children are dragged out of the bed constantly to go and volunteer with Joan. So these are just a few things that I need to say. To the single mama, she sees you. To the fathers putting their families before their eagles so everyone will eat, she sees you. To the children without coats, hats, boots or school clothes, she sees you. To the mother without food, pampers or formula, she sees you. To the children whose parents drug them out of bed to volunteer, she sees you. To the same children who now volunteer on their own, she sees you. To the sororities and fraternities packing food for senior citizens, she sees you. To the volunteers that show up to help regardless if the weather is negative three or 103 degrees, she sees you. To the families whose utilities are about to be shut off, she sees you. To the politicians that show up and work on a regular basis, she sees you. Also to the politicians who show up for photo ops and during election times, we all see you. To those trying to smear her name, we the people see you, she sees you. To JJJ, who with a beautiful spirit and a giant heart, willing to help anyone, anywhere, anytime, we the people of Lansing love you and we see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that wish to address the committee?
Good evening, Barbara Roberts Mason. I've been here before, so I'm sure that you're not surprised to see me tonight because of the relationship that all of us in the city have with Joan Jackson Johnson. We're not here to make a determination in terms of what may or may not have happened or any of the kind of things that are going on, except to say that we believe that the way that she was treated simply was not fair. It was quite unjust. Almost anybody else would have been given the opportunity to at least say, "I did this" or "I didn't do this," or "Here are the records, let me show you the records." Let's sit down and discuss whatever this is. But in this particular case, she was told on one day that you're going to be put on administrative leave. And that was the first time that she was given that indication that that was going to happen and she was almost escorted out of the building. That was disrespectful for somebody and it was demeaning for somebody who has done so much for this community. On this past weekend, as we all know, with the weather as it was, I would not have been out in the weather. But had Joan been working, she would have been in her car, in all that ice and all that snow and rain, looking under the bridges and in doorways and on the street for the homeless. She would not have been at home in a warm house like I was, she would have been out there looking for people. She's one who takes care of the downtrodden, she takes care of the homeless, she makes sure there's a house for someone. And I can attest to that because I had a homeless person who needed a home and I called Joan and she made sure that she found a shelter and that she was put into an apartment after that. She will provide food for the hungry, clothes for those who do not have clothes. She's full of love and she would never, ever treat anyone the way that she was treated. Joan should have been treated with respect. We love her, we care about her, this community does, and we do not believe that she will have done anything, anything that was a mismanagement of any finances. And we're very upset about that, what just happened to her. So I don't know whether anybody here tonight is going to make a statement and I assume that you're not because you're probably studying the situation as we in the community are. But we're waiting patiently, well, maybe impatiently, to find out what the council is going to do. And we hope that we see her back on the job very, very soon because the city needs her. The city needs her for the food bank. The city needs her for people who are having difficulties in our community. And I know my time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I will not preach a sermon. Reverend Jones was here earlier and he probably preached one himself.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for the time.
Anyone else wish to address the committee? Please state your name, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Larry Trice, pastor of Tabernacle of David. It's my wife, Laney. And we want to just share that, how we feel about Dr. Joan. You know, I always believed that the strength of a community is its faith-based organizations or ministries. And we have been able to be so blessed to see over the years that I've pastored, thousands of people helped at Tabernacle of David because of the opportunities that Joan has given us, whether it's feeding or clothing, how many people that we have come into our ministries that need house, a place to stay. Just at the last minute, we call and say, "Is there any place, anything that we can do?" And she steps forward and helps us out to make sure that these, that people are having the opportunity to have a place to stay, they're clothed. I've been down here probably only one other time to share about something that was very important to me and this is the only other time. I hope to be here in the future, hope not to be here in the future for anything else, but this cannot happen. We will not stand by and let Joan be treated like this. And like I said, I don't know everything that happened, but what we do not want to see happen is her name dragged in the mud over anything. Even her starkest enemies know of the good work that she does. And so, we're not going to stand by and let this happen. And so, we know that you're going to do the right thing, you know, for Dr. Joan. We love her and we pray for you constantly, City Council, and we pray for the mayor's office and the city attorney's office, that God would give you wisdom to be able to make the correct choices at Tabernacle of David. So we just ask that you would look into this and restore Joan back to the place where she's supposed to be. We thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the committee?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dr. Eugene Kane. I've been a resident of this city for about 50 years. When I saw the photo of my friend in the newspaper the other day, it bothered me. I became angry, as a matter of fact, so angry that I took a walk. You've heard all of the good things and I really liked the statement by Ms. Quinney that was read, but I want to talk to you about process and procedures. I have, in 50 years as a professional educator and as a kid once, managed money. From the Purpernites Social Savages Club, 11 years old, Birmingham, Alabama, to a superintendent's position in Highland Park, $37 million, to an assistant superintendent's position with responsibility for a quarter of a billion dollars. And one thing that I have learned over the years, if anyone wants to go after you, they will nitpick the budget. Now, the budget that Mrs. Johnson was working with is one that you approved. The mayor brought it to you. The cost centers, I'm willing to bet you, are the same. The line items are the same. If she wanted to change something, I'm quite sure you have a procedure where she comes back and then you give your okay. And I'm quite sure you're not going to stand idly by and watch something that you approved be mishandled. The other thing I want to say is this, was she given, now obviously, I think this was an audit exception, no big deal. And what happens to audit exceptions? You have a conference with the auditor and the administrator, in this case, the mayor. Did she have that audience? Did they tell her specifically? And the other thing, when you have an audit exception, they will ask you, "Come up with corrective action." Not to throw your name out there and to almost inadvertently accuse you of stealing and taking. That's wrong. And everybody in here know that that's wrong. The last thing I want to say, to the mayor who's not here, all the questions that I ask and even you, I know you can't answer the question, but at some point, to the mayor, all of those parties that you sought to support you, we want you to come back to those organizations, those churches, the NAACP and all of these other organizations and stand and tell folks why you did what you did because it's wrong. Thank you.
Dr. Kane, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the committee? You'll be given three minutes and please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Bobby Hardy. When I heard about this, what was going on, I was hurt. Many nights of restless from it because it affected me because it was against her. Dr. Johnson is a lifesaver. She is, I can't even begin to even begin to tell you all the things that she's done in my family life. The food pantry is a blessing. There were many nights my family couldn't, didn't have anything to eat. And the food pantry is a blessing. She has helped me in so many ways, even down to the children getting pampers, formula, with these services. You know, to see her name dragged in the mud as though she's some type of a animal, hurts. It hurts. It hurts so badly. All I can say is that, if you reach into your hearts, think back, it could be you without nothing to eat. It could be you with no formula, with no place to live. One woman who does a million of jobs in one body, who does it from her heart, it's not about showing fashion. I watched her hop in pain through the winter snow and the cold outdoors. I watched her and she never, not one time, shared any type of distress. She did it with her heart. And every time she comes, she always encourages us to love one another. And it's hard in this world to love the things that hurt you, but she encourages us to love each other, no matter what skin we're in, to continue to love. The words that she speaks to us bring power. It helps me and I know it helps many others. And the people, their needs are growing. She never looked at us in a different, and I thank God for her. And I just want you to reach into your heart. Her name is a good name. Don't put her name in the mud. Don't make her look like she's nobody because she is somebody. I love her and I know you love her too. I know you love the things that she do for this city. Please, straighten this out today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Maxine Hankins Kane. And this is a sad time in this community. And when the word came out that our dear friend was escorted from her office, that news went through this community like a wildfire. And it broke a lot of hearts and people were sleepless like I was the night that I heard it, angry like I am still. And the question I have is, why did this have to happen? Why did we have to go this far? Why was there not a person of wisdom who could have forecasted this or seen this? Who could have seen how the community was going to rally behind her and said, "No, we cannot do this. We cannot do this, we have to stop this." What you have done is destroyed her reputation. You have destroyed her reputation and the question is, how can you give that back to her? You have tarnished who she is. And I see tears up there flowing. You know who she is. No one can replace her. No one can replace her. She's a household name in this community. It didn't have to happen if you had been wise enough to forecast or to see what's happening today. The question still is, how can you, how can this community help regain that impeccable reputation that she had? You've heard from the people, you know yourself what she has done. She needs to be restored. And to Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson, who perhaps is listening right now, we love you, we have your back, we will continue to have your back, Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson.
Folks, if we could refrain from celebrations, et cetera, during the meeting, we'd appreciate it. it. Thank you. Sir, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Joshua Gillespie. I've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson for over eighteen years. We've probably brought over a thousand-plus students from MSU to work with her. The person that comes to mind is Cahill Gubran, who says, "You give but little when you give of your possessions. It's when you give of yourself that you truly give." Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson is the epitome of a giver. We've worked with her on countless programs, and you've heard the people talk about Kids Connect, trying to find those who are under the bridge who are cold. It saddens my heart to know that we, or those responsible, have dragged her name, put her face on the cover, talked about what she possibly did opposed to what she's done. Regardless of what's said, she's a beacon light of hope. She's the reason why many people are fed in this city. She's the reason why many people have clothes in this city. She's the reason why kids can eat when they're out of school in this city. Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson is more than a hero. She's God-sent, purposed to do the work of taking care of people. She's the antithesis of what's been mentioned. She's magnanimous, servant, loving, giving. We appreciate all that she's done, and if you don't hear our voice, you will see our votes. If you don't hear our voice, you will see our votes. We love you, Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson. We got your back for life. That's one thousand.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to address the committee? Seeing no others, we'll move on to discussion and action items for this evening's committee of the whole. The first item is a resolution reappointing Derek Milo as a member of the Elected Officers' Compensation Commission with a term to expire ten-one of two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Milo was recently appointed by this council to serve on a term that expired at the end, in October. It was a partial term, and the resolution is recommended by the mayor, and he's gone through the vetting process, and we have that before us to reappoint him. Vice President Hussein.
I would move the resolution to reappoint Derek Milo as a member of the Elected Officers' Compensation Commission for a term to expire October first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Is there any discussion on this item? I will note the commission does not meet again until two thousand and twenty-one. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The next item, we are going to invite up to join the mayor's executive assistant or deputy mayor, an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority, to explain what it is that's in front of us and why it's here. Mr. Keith, welcome.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is the third amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority through the city attorney, Smirka, and I have been working on some documents that need to be updated since the city market is no longer acting as a city market. So this is one of the items, the Articles of Incorporation. The amendments to it are directly addressing that change to our board member allocation. In the previous Articles of Incorporation, the city market had a vendor representative on our board. That organization no longer exists, so it was time to make that adjustment. And we currently have a CVB board member representative on our board, and so we're just acknowledging that and updating that as well.
Thank you. Anything you wish to add from the administration's perspective? Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a corporation that is established under Act Thirty-One of nineteen forty-eight, believe it or not. It's a Building Authority Act, and it's been used by cities across the state for functions like building stadiums, convention centers, and economic development. There are Articles of Incorporation that are authorized by the statute, and when it was first originated, it was originated to build the, what was called Oldsmobile Park at that time, and also to take over the functions of the Lansing Center. Since that time, there have been a couple amendments. This is the third one, to set even the terms of the officers to remove the requirement of a city market vendor, and also to provide a provision for the convention and visitors' bureau. This is not a charter corporation, it is a statutory corporation. If you vote the resolution to approve the third amendment, the next step will be to publish a notice in the paper, to file the amendment with county clerks, and then to file with the Secretary of State.
Thank you. We will not be asking for a motion this evening. We will reexamine this committee the whole next, in two weeks, and the council meeting after that. If there are no further questions, we will lay this aside and excuse Mr. Keith. Thank you, Mr. Keith. Have a good evening. The next item is a resolution amending the Lansing City Council rules, Rules Four and Ten. The first one deals with, as you're aware, in our council rules, we must, cannot approve a rules change the evening it's introduced, so we're introducing this tonight at the city council meeting and asking for adoption on January twenty-seventh. Rule number four deals with the appointment of committee members, and I'm requesting, putting this resolution forward to allow the Committee on Development and Planning for the year two thousand and twenty to consist of four members, reinstating language from two years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, someone else, about two years ago, that in the event of a tie vote on a four-member committee, the issue shall be automatically discharged to the committee of the whole. So that is Rule Number Four's amendment. And Rule Number Ten deals with the consent agenda. It allows the clerk's office a little bit more discretion in what goes on the consent agenda. Currently, the consent agenda requires all issues that are not six-vote issues to be on the consent agenda, and as you know, it is our practice to generally discuss everything on the consent agenda that is not routine. So we're going to give the clerk's office, under this amendment, a little bit more authority to determine what is and what is not a routine matter, and place those on the consent agenda if this rule change is adopted. So I would ask for a motion. Counsel, Vice President Hussein.
President Spatafor, I'd move the resolution pertaining to Lansing City Council Rules Amendments for Rules Four and Ten.
It has been moved. Is there any discussion on this amendment besides what's already been said? No discussion seen. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The next item is a motion from Vice President Hussein for closed session.
Counsel, President Spatafor, pursuant to MCL fifteen-point-two-six-eight-h of the Open Meetings Act, I hereby move that we recess in a closed session to consult with the city attorney, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state statute, specifically to discuss a written legal opinion and written material from the city attorney provided under attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product, and which is also exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act pursuant to MCL fifteen-point-two-four-three B-one and five, and MCL fifteen-point-two-four-three G and H.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice President Hussein that the committee recession to closed session is, we're gonna need a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Enough votes for a closed session. We are in closed session. For those of you in the audience, we will return out of closed session, and then adjourn, and then the city council meeting will begin directly after that.